There we are, and we're on the air. Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting to order. We have two folks for the open forum. I'm going to call them up first and they'll go to this mic and state your name and address and sign in when you're there. The first one this evening is Jean Fox. Jean, would you please come forward? You have approximately three minutes.
I am Jean Fox. I am formerly from Richfield, but currently residing in Burnsville, 2209 Crest Mountain Lane. Thank you very much for letting me come here tonight. In 2012, Angela Champagne Fromm was attacked in broad daylight in a downtown parking lot. In fighting off her attacker, she was stabbed with a 10-inch knife and nearly lost her life. However, she survived. And after her recovery, she formed a nonprofit organization called the Fight Back Project. Richfield Rotary, of whom I am a member, is co-sponsoring this public safety seminar with Richfield Public Safety. It's offered free to the public. It is absolutely free. There is no cost or donation required. Angela will be telling her story. You will hear the 911 tape. You'll hear how she experienced the attack. You'll hear how she recovered from it. But more importantly, you are going to hear how to protect yourself should this occur to you. And even more importantly than that, you will hear about what you can do to be aware so that perhaps you will never get into that situation again. I'm just here tonight to present to you. I'd like to give you a flyer if I could. I don't know how I do that.
Isn't there's a way you can put that up and show it?
Okay, sure. How do I do that?
Could staff please help? Somebody? Put that up? So people can see it online as well?
I am going to put some of these on the table out there if anyone would like to. Yeah.
Why don't you give Tom some flyers for us up here too?
He will. Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then I'm going to leave some on the table back there. Everyone is invited. It is appropriate for ages 6th grade and up. It is geared towards women, girls of that age, and the men who care about them. It's a really important seminar. Richfield Rotary is dedicated to service above self. And one of the things we really want to do is to provide service in the community that changes people's lives. We really feel that this will be one of those events. We hope you'll all come. I know Mayor Gattell is on the agenda to introduce the evening and to invite everybody and welcome people.
Do you want to say the evening in time?
Yes. I didn't. Sorry. Okay. May 3rd at 6:30 PM at Richfield Middle School. And I'm blanking on the address. 74...what is it? Somebody know? 7461. Thank you, Oliver. We are in the auditorium. There's plenty of seating. So please feel free to come. Invite your wives, your mothers, your sisters, your neighbors. We hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
What time was that again, Jean?
6:30 PM.
And just to add, it's on the Richfield website. So if you can't find it, go on the Richfield homepage and you'll see it on there. It says the Fight Back Project.
Thanks. We also have lots of flyers up around in the community. Some of you may have already seen it. So when those are passed out, if we can just put the extras in the back, that would be great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nancy Rowley.
My name is Nancy Rowley. I live at 7520 Blaisdell Avenue here in Richfield. I didn't know this was going to be such a special evening. Where I really would have planned to come. I'll stay for the performance. Good. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening as the appointed member of Intermediate District 287 School Board from Richfield. District 287 operates several school sites around the metro area, including the South Education Center on 75th and Penn. As you've probably noticed, the new youth soccer field and running track at that site are ready for use. The improvement to the property was funded by a grant from Hennepin County. The facility will benefit students attending the South Education Center and the larger Richfield community. And it was developed through a partnership between District 287 staff and Richfield Parks and Recreation. District 287 Board values community partnerships in its member districts. So I came here tonight to express appreciation to Jim Topatoffer and his staff, Nick Thompson, Chris Link, for their time, attention, and hard work on this project. City staff will maintain the soccer field and it will be available to community groups when school is not in session. So thank you all for supporting this partnership. I'm confident it will benefit South Education Center students and Richfield youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please. A member?
Well, I just want to say something to Nancy, you know, that when she mentioning that a lot of support from Jim Topsonhofer, you know, Jim is one of the staff people that probably, Jim and Cheryl from the Community Center have a lot to, you know, have a lot of interaction with the community, probably more than other directors. And Jim is all about partnerships. Not only, community partnerships are his number-one thing. But he works, you know, with the schools. He works with Hennepin County. He works with Nine Mile, what is it? Nine Mile?
Creek?
And then what's the other one? Three Rivers. He works with the DNR. He's just all over the place. And he does a tremendous job. And I spoke to Nancy the other day and she just went on and on and on about Jim. I said, you know, it's, you know, the thing is, is that we acknowledge him also, all the time. But we appreciate it when other people support him. And I know you have high regards for him and his staff. They do a wonderful job.
Absolutely. He's a hidden treasure.
Yes. Thank you.
I also, I also just want to say, we really appreciate the fact, we need the soccer space. We are running out of soccer space everywhere. Soccer is getting to be so popular here. It's so nice that you're opening this up for the community.
It is a youth soccer field. It's not an adult soccer field.
That's wonderful, too.
This is even better. So all of you, when you finish tonight, you can run over there and make a few goals.
I want to thank everyone. We're going to stand. Please join us if you are able to stand and do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doesn't it sound, that sounded really cool with all your voices in the background already. At this time, I'd ask for the city council to approve the minutes of the Special Concurrent City Council and School Board Work Session of April 4th, 2016, the Special City Council and Civil Service Commission Closed Executive Session of April 4th, 2016, the Special Concurrent City Council Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission Work Session of April 12th, 2016, the Special City Council Work Session of April 12th, 2016, and the regular city council meeting of April 12th, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, tonight, you are all here for this great presentation. And the first presentation here tonight is our wonderful STEM choir. I always look forward to hearing these wonderful young people sing. This is such a highlight to the year here at the council. So I will let their teacher introduce the choir. And we're going to come around and watch you guys for change. Some of us.
Oh, sure.
My name is Kathy Luby Keeman and this is Mrs. Gail Miles. We can co-direct the after-school choir that meets on Tuesdays from 2:30 to 3:30 every week. We meet at the STEM building, but we are also the RDLS, our STEM combined choir. So I didn't want my students to feel a little slighted there because I am the RDLS music teacher. Mrs. Miles is the STEM teacher. Thank you. Yes, we do. Our first song will be, we're going to do two patriotic ones. It's an election year. And we thought you would have a fun time with these two because they're not controversial. The other thing is that we'll sing them in a couple of parts. So I think you'll enjoy the combined efforts. The first one will include some sign language. It's "America the Beautiful." And the second one will be a combined song of, sing a song of peace with "This Is My Country." Thank you.
Sing a song of peace to the world till every land is singing. Sound the bells of peace to the world till every nation drinking. Round and round cross mountain and plain. Hand in hand one long loving chain. Hush your peace and freedom rain from sea to shining sea. This is my country, land of my birth. This is my country, friend is honor. I bless thee my allegiance, America the home. For this is my country, to have and to hold. Sing a song of peace.
The number you just heard was an Israeli folk song called "Round and Round," about dancing round and round. And we're going to conclude tonight with an American song. We do have a dance for this, but we don't have the space. So we're going to do this from our standing position with a lot of enthusiasm. It's Louis Primo's "Sing, Sing, Sing." Well, now we think you're awake for the rest of the meeting. And we thanked Mayor Gattell and all the other council members for allowing us to come, especially to Steve Devich, who helped us arrange this. Thank you, choir. And thank you, parents and family members, for supporting us this year and coming out tonight.
Nice job.
Have a great rest of the evening.
I want to, I want to thank those parents for, especially, for bringing your children out. I know you have a lot of things and you have very busy schedules, but it is so wonderful to have your students and your children here in our council chambers. I can't tell you, we look forward to this every single year when you come. This is so nice. Thank you for supporting your children.
Very nice.
Yeah, very nice. Energetic.
It's all of that.
Okay, so there's a thumb drive. I'll get, I'll get staff.
That's what I, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Just kind of put the smile on your face to start with.
Oh, yes.
I'm amazed that there's that many people out there that think Trump isn't running a county. It's really kind of scary. I'm more interested in Maryland Democratic primary for...
If you want to mention it, since I hadn't. I did the last, I was going to do this today. It's a long, better one. Okay. I was thinking maybe we should mention Portland, Adam, too.
Okay, let's see.
We have some pictures on here.
Well, we'll see. We'll see. If it works, if it works, that would be nice.
Yeah, maybe queue up Kristen. I can't remember the exact date. I might see Kristen here.
Cheers, Karen. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Somebody much more technically advanced than me.
I do.
You have a, yes, he's got it right here. Arrow does.
There's the folder called "Display." Uh, yeah. One, two, three.
It's been missed.
It's probably tough. It's close to me. It should be working, thinking. He's telling it to. Yeah. Oh, wait, wait. There's a display. Display. Sure. Yeah, display. Yeah.
Got it? All right.
Sure. Oh, this is the other.
Thank you, everyone. We're just finding some technical issues here on our next presentation here. We had quite a cultural event already. But tonight, following that, we have a guest tonight. And I'm very happy to say that Ms. Xiaoli Lu is here. And I met her back some time ago and then went and traveled with her in China. She is assistant to the Secretary General, who we also met there. And she has been one of our guides and while we were there, explaining things to us. She's also in charge of the International Cultural Exchange and will be talking to you about that, making a presentation. With her tonight is Eric Ang, a consultant who has worked in China off and on. But also tonight, he functions as the interpreter tonight for Xiaoli as she makes her presentation. So we'll let you take that away. Welcome.
Thank you.
You need to be in the mic, too. Yeah. And you have to share the mic. Yeah, you'll have to share the mic, Eric.
Hi, I'm Xiaoli Lu. And I am from Shanxi Province International Cultural Exchange Center. I mean, this time I came on behalf of Shanxi International Cultural Exchange Center. And the Shouyang County Government. We want to, we're here to send our regards from these two institutions. We, we thank you for Mayor Gattell's invitation to the city council meeting. And then we also thank you, Mayor Gattell and her dedication came to Shanxi during cold winter. Shanxi is a province in the north part of China. December is the coldest month. December is the coldest month. Uh, the city市长一行到访的时间确实气候比较，呃，冷 Uh, while it's not, it may not be as cold as Minnesota, but the time is very challenging and, uh, uh, is more frigid compared to most other part of the country. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. And, uh, you know, uh, you know, we, uh, we feel warm to have friends from far, uh, from far away and we thank you, uh, for Debbie, uh, Debbie's, uh, incoming visit during that part of winter to initiate cultural, uh, cultural and also education and also economic as a possibility. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. And then we thank her for her professionalism and the representation of, uh, as American, fellow American city. Uh, Shouyang之行圆满成功. And, uh, so, so, uh, she concluded her trip to Shouyang with a great success. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. We, uh, she received one welcome and also praises from the Shanxi, uh, Shouyang County Government as well as Shanxi International Cultural Center being a collaborator in this effort. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. And what, uh, what excites us more is we will be, we have been exploring the possibility of education exchange between, uh, City of Richfield and, and Shanxi Province. 方面，在未来几年. And we are hopeful in the future we'll be able to initiate, uh, educational cultural exchange with City of Richfield in terms of academic, uh, cultural and also art. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. And we also invite the, uh, the member of Richfield to come visit us in China and to, uh, to build a facility for us to do things and also in, uh, Shouyang, Richfield City. Uh, I'd like to give a greeting to the city. And you're welcome to visit our, you know, uh, our county for your, for tourism locations, for, uh, for the county city, uh, for county government and the city and the people and the rich cultural food like noodles you're sharing this way. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Yes, and that's all, you know, that's all we have today. We have some pictures to show on the, uh, on the trip. Change, yeah. Uh, this... So this is the, uh, so, sorry, you're going too fast. So this is a kind of a, uh, I mean, this is a ceremony where we have this event together, you know, celebrating, you know, of collaborative relationship between, between city and county. Uh, this was the first day when Mayor Gotel arrived, uh, Shanxi Provincial Government and then she was received by General Secretary Song and, uh, during the, uh, during the welcome dinner. Okay, in, uh, in Shanxi Province, best education, higher education, called Taiyuan University of Science.
Talk on the mic, talk on the mic.
Oh, sorry. Okay, the best university of Shanxi Province calls Taiyuan University of Science Technology and they invited Mayor Gotel to visit there and then, I mean, this is where they have a session called, uh, Ancient Architecture Restoration and they can see a lot of different kind of ancient artifact, uh, on table and behind. Okay, on the right, on the immediate right, you can see a gentleman. He is, uh, General Secretary, uh, General Secretary Hao of Shouyang County Government and then on the, on the right, uh, one more, right more is Director Song of Shanxi International Cultural Exchange Center. So this is down the restored artifact, you know, in Shanxi Province. Shanxi Province has about 3,000 year of history. It's the origination of Chinese civil, uh, ancient civilization. So this is another kind of picture we took for the event as of commemoration. Okay, this is a Shouyang, uh, the, uh, the lady to, if you recognize, I have a red sweater on, the lady to my left, she is a county governor of Shouyang County.
She was amazing.
Yeah. Uh, to give a, uh, to give an administrative perspective, in China, county is the city level and the, and the city is county level over there.
Yeah.
So you see in reverse of United States.
Interesting, yeah.
So, uh, this is, the noodle is the most famous food over in Shanxi Province. It's kind of cultural food. It's kind of like our, you know, chicken wild rice. It's a tofu there. It's a tofu there. So that is a, uh, kind of demonstration how to make that noodle. And we welcome everybody to visit there.
Oh, that's so nice. That's so nice. Thank you. You, you know what, and I just want to say that later this week, we're actually going to be meeting with the schools about the student exchange program that we're trying to set up between Shanxi Province and China, coming over here to students. So we're really looking forward to seeing how we can move that forward. So thank you and I know you're here to help make that happen. So I appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you Xiaoli for coming tonight and just introducing yourself to our council. It's lovely to see you. I'm sure I'll run, I, you, you travel to the U.S. a lot. Her son is in Texas, so, in, uh, in school, so she'll see them. Thank you, Eric, for being our interpreter again tonight. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming.
If there's any question I can answer, please let me know.
Okay, all right.
All right.
We would like, I'd like a copy of those pictures though. I don't have all those.
Oh, sure, no problem.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Nice meeting everyone.
Okay, all right, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and, and next we, follow all these great presentations. We have a presentation of a proclamation rewarding, regarding Earth Day today and I guess I'm, I'm doing that with Karen down here. Come on, Karen.
Madam America, I just say, you know, I mean, this is about a different issue. I just, I just wanted to, um, to acknowledge that we have Nancy Gibbs here. She used to work for the City of Richfield. What?
Nancy Straff.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, but she used to work for the, uh, at the City Clerk's Department and, uh, we miss her, missed her when she left, but she's here with her husband and they came to see their grandson and I think he sings wonderfully.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, many of you probably know that I'm an engineer, but you probably don't know that I worked in the Environmental Health and Safety Day and so, uh, yeah, I know you did. Um, so when I was out in industry, lots of times we celebrated Earth Day and I'm so glad that the city takes us and makes us such an important thing too. Whereas Earth Day is celebrated nationwide on Friday, April 22nd to bring awareness to the need to care for the environment. And whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationwide on Friday, April 29th, and Arbor Month is celebrated in Minnesota during the month of May to promote the value in planting of trees. And whereas, Richfield's Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain and manage the health of Richfield's urban forest. And whereas, trees and forests provide a natural play environment that encourage exploration, creativity, activity. And whereas, trees and forests produce clean air, natural filters, groundwater, provide a settling that reduces stress and improves mental health, reduces exposure to the sun, UV rays, and provides a home for many animals and species. And whereas, the community of Richfield is encouraged to participate in park cleanup efforts in May and April as well as year round to demonstrate good stewardship of our green spaces and natural resources. And whereas, Earth Day was celebrated by the City of Richfield at Woodlake Nature, Nature Center on April 23rd with garlic mustard and buckthorn removal. And I actually know what that is. And with a book signing event for the book N for, for the nature, an activity book based on Woodlake by author Richard, uh, Richfield resident Megan, is it Muley? Melia. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City of Richfield observes Earth Day, Arbor Day and Arbor Month as a way to, of promoting, promoting environmental stewardship and mindful choices every day of our life. Proclaim this 26th day of April 2016 and signed by Debbie Gotel, Mayor. Thanks.
I'm sure you're...
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah. And put it up there so people can see. So talk about, go ahead. Yeah, there you go, see? So they can see it.
So this book, if you look, this is my favorite picture. Um, this book was put together by Megan and, uh, illustrated by, um, a student from Richfield High School, Sonia Boyer. And it's just really a lovely book. It, it really focuses on Richfield. It has a map of where you can find Richfield and then where you can find Woodlake. It's got activities in it and it's for sale at the nature center and the proceeds go to friends at Woodlake. So, um, we had about 100 people there on Sunday, sold over 20 books, so made $100 for the nature center because we get $5 for the fall for that. So I just can't say enough about how nice it is to have someone do all that work and I was just sort of the editor. I'm used to being the author. It was just much easier just to say, no, do this, do that, not have to, yeah. So anyway, I did want, I did bring a bookmark for all the council members to, in case you have children in your lives. So happy Earth Day.
Oh, how nice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think so. Thank you. That's cool. That's cool.
Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you.
You can give me too if you want.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's really nice and I'm glad we recognize that day. For council, we have a discussion regarding participating in the Fourth of July Parade. Is there a question if we're going to or not?
Is there a question whether we're going to or what mode of transportation are we going to employ?
That's right. Well, you know, we, we have done all kinds of small little vehicles and things, council members.
Well, I'd like to ask permission since it probably might be my last Fourth of July as a council member or city employee. I rode the police Harley in the very first, uh, Fourth of July Parade and I'd like permission to ride my Harley in this Fourth of July Parade.
Okay, I see your head shaking. Okay, I, I like your, I like the idea of your Harley, um, doing that. And I know we've had some cars and convertibles. Mostly I walk it because I'm always handing out candy and stuff like that. I, but I usually have a car for anybody who needs a rest.
Handing out candy till you run out.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we won't have your cart, so I'll make sure I have a convertible. But I only have a two-seater, so and I'll have a driver. So anybody who needs a rest will have to go in there. We'll have candy in the trunk.
I can, I can be on the move handing out candy and after last year, I think we need a little bit more candy. I was, I have a little more experience this year with, you know, distribution of candy.
Yes, yes, I know.
We add about 50 pounds a year and we're still running out. It's, it's not the amount, it's our gratuitous handing it out.
Gratuitous is right.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. So we'll have a couple of vehicles probably and then, you know, Richfield Bloomington Honda or Mitsubishi always donates one of their really fun, colorful cars for Edwina and that's so nice and that is fun. Thank you, Edwina, for doing that and promoting them. Um, so yes.
There's always the benefit when you're older.
Yes.
Councilmember and Howard and, and myself will cover the ambulatory stuff because we're the two that can get it done and...
How much candy can we get in that Harley? You got packs of the size.
I got big saddlebags.
I know you do.
I got big saddlebags.
I've seen it. Okay, all right. Okay, you know what, Garcia's got a long list. Do we want to let her go first or not?
It, it might, it might get us over quickly. I don't know.
Okay, go. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Now, uh, first I had the fall dinner. Karen, are there still seats available?
For you only. Everybody else can't come.
Uh-oh.
We've got, we're about 175 right now.
And, yeah. Okay, and, but the max? Okay, sure. Sure. Yeah, you, you, if you're interested, please stop by Woodlake Nature Center. It's a Friends of Woodlake Dinner, which is their big fundraiser and, um, you know, it's, it's just incredible. The, the food is terrific. They have an auction. They have prizes. They have a speaker that will be speaking on butterflies, monarch butterflies. I believe in it's, it's always fun and it's, it's, you know, the food's always great except for the chocolate mousse. It, it's not real.
Yeah.
But other, other than that, it's always great. Oh, good, good. And then speaking of Woodlake, there's the Woodlake Birdathon, Birdathon. It's watching birds. And that is, um, on May the 7th. It starts at 5:30 a.m. and ends at 5:45 p.m. And, okay, then we go to the League of Women Voters. Um, the mayor and I attended their annual meeting and one of the things that, um, that we were talking about is a recruitment effort and try to get, uh, younger women maybe interested, um, in joining us. We had two potential, um, members that, that did show up and it was great because, you know, it's always nice to see kids. Um, you know, we, that we call them kids, but they're young women. So if you're interested in join, uh, joining the League of Women Voters, it's, it's a very, it's a nonpartisan group, but it definitely takes part in anything and everything that happens regionally and locally in our own community. Then going on to the Hennepin County, uh, uh, our city manager, Devich, and Mayor Gotel and myself went in different cars because we didn't know we were going, um, until we got there. But we went to the Hennepin County State of the County address and we had a very good time and, um, it was really, um, what do you call it? Um, it was really informational. And one of the reasons for us to go is because, you know, we rely a lot on Hennepin County and Hennepin County knows how, how it's important it is to serve their communities and, you know, and Hennepin County is the biggest county. Well, no, St. Louis County is the biggest county. But we partner with them so much and we appreciate the, the support that they've always been there for the city and so we were happy to, to attend. Speaking of city addresses, our mayor will be speaking May the 19th here at the municipal center for her, the state of, the city address, 7:15 in the morning till 9:15. So put that on your calendar.
Not quite that early, but...
No, that's what it said on the, on the website.
Oh, that, that's for the chamber probably. Chambers, the, the state of the city starts at 8:30, right?
Okay.
I believe. 8:30, so, so it's not that early.
Okay, but if you want breakfast, right?
Well, you have to pay, that's the chamber and you have to pay for it.
Oh, that's a, okay, that's a chamber and you have to pay for breakfast. So you can call the chamber and see if they've got...
Well, the state of the city at 8:30 and all the public is welcome to come into that presentation.
Right. Very informative and very, very nice. And then I spoke while we were over there, um, listening to Hennepin County folks. I spoke to Milt Schoen. He's from Hennepin County, works there and he, uh, works with veterans and he informed me that, that, uh, the county veterans officers are going to have a satellite office here in Richfield and that's going to be a big plus for us and it'll be located in the bank building where Houlihan says. So, um, county veterans officers are terrific people because they help you realize the benefits, uh, that you can tap into and they advocate for you. So it's, um, when I was in the legislature, uh, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't brag, but I did receive their, the Veterans Legislative of the Year Award. So, okay. Then later I met with, uh, the Historical Society. Ruth Ann Clay is the new manager there and John Wickett is the, um, chair of the Woodlake, of the Historical Society and they are planning many things. They've just been awarded some, uh, legacy funding. Uh, they did, they did show me a thick book like this, which I'll share with, uh, with Jim Topsonhofer and, um, and, um, what's your name again? Devich.
I forget who he was.
Because, uh, you know, I mean, um, and really... Because, uh, you know, I mean, um, and really if you, if you have ever been to, to the Bartholomew House, it really is in bad need of repair. And, uh, including the foundation, which it's, it's going to involve a lot of money. And to take care of all of it, it's going to require more than five hundred thousand dollars. But at least they, they, um, the Legacy Fund provided architects to come and look and investigate and, uh, kind of build a plan to, to see what we can do. But naturally, that's going to take an awful lot of money. But it's something that, uh, I agreed to do a little homework on it and then to pre, to present it to, um, Devich and Topsonhofer and, and hopefully, you know, they can, um, look over the book and, and because they would like to make a presentation at a study session to the city council. And speaking of the Historical Society, two of us, two of us went to the, uh, their fundraiser at the VFW. It was called One Hit Wonders.
That was great.
It was music and dancing. Uh, these are folks that, that, uh, produced a record and it was a one-hit wonder and that was all you heard about them and that was it. So it was music, dancing, and food. It was really nice.
Really fun.
It was, uh, and I would encourage people to, now in the summertime, we have all these events going on and churches have their, um, you know, their fiestas and, and their pig roast and barbecues and all of that stuff. It's fun to go out in the community and, and eventually we will have warmth and sun. So, and that's, that's, that's it for me.
Oh, you, I thought there was another page. Councilmember Elliott.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm exhausted. You know, I think Edwina said at the end, uh, there's so many things going on in the community. Two things to, to bring to mind and they may seem far off, but I know the Fourth of July Committee is looking for volunteers as they always are. You can find, uh, find them on the city webpage, I'm assuming, and the contacts and everything. So join early. Learn what it's all about, have some fun, and enjoy the Fourth of July even more than you have before. Second thing is, um, we begin the meetings for Open Streets, the annual opening and closing off of Penn Avenue. That always needs volunteers. Right now, we're, uh, kind of putting the agenda together and everything, but if you have any questions or you have services to provide or talents, you can also contact Mr. Topsonhofer, who's getting a lot of recognition tonight. And I'll guarantee you, he can find something for you to do to make even, uh, better this year than it has been historically. And it keeps getting better every year and, uh, the community and the, the help and the volunteers are, are a large part of that. So two things you can kind of put on your agenda, start working on now, and it's going to make two days this summer even more enjoyable than they have been.
Mm-hmm.
True.
Great. Good. Councilmember Howard.
Uh, I wanted to touch on an event that's coming up next week. I think I'll go up and put, uh, put it on the screen here.
Is this the one that you wanted? I picked up? Does, sorry.
You picked it up.
I picked it up because I didn't know if it was yours or what. It was left there. So somebody else had their stuff on it. Great, thanks.
So the, the Richfield Human Rights Commission is, uh, hosting an event called Islam One-O-One and it's an educational opportunity. It's actually hosted at Richfield United Methodist Church for people that have questions about, uh, the Muslim faith, uh, to hear a presentation led by students, uh, to, and to ask questions. And so I want to put up this flyer here. There we go. So here's the flyer. It's, uh, going to be from six to seven thirty p.m., including a Q and A on Wednesday, May fourth, at Richfield United Methodist Church. Uh, the Human Rights Commission, I'm the liaison there and, uh, we heard about events that they've done in another location. Just sounds like a great event if, uh, and, you know, a way to bring people together from different faiths to, to learn from each other. Uh, and so if you're interested and, and have time, I'd encourage people to come on Wednesday, May fourth.
Thank you. That's great. Good idea. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we're going to be talking about watering later, but I just wanted to remind people that your grass is now growing. Please cut it. We're going to get into the season where, uh, we're going to be doing the, you know, the weed letters and the tall grass and that. And check with your neighbors, uh, see if they have the availability of even doing, uh, you know, their grass and that. And if, you know, you get elderly populations or people that may not have a lawnmower and that, uh, I think the schools also have a, a way of getting out there, but, uh, who, who would they contact, Steve, if they have an issue where they can't do it? Do you have an, uh?
Um, I don't know offhand, but, um, they could, uh, well, actually, they could probably just, uh, call the city manager's office and, or maybe Karen could.
Karen, okay.
They can actually contact me.
Well.
And I can, uh, get them in touch with, uh, agencies, depending on if they're seniors or, um, you know, disabled or something. We, we obviously work with a lot of different agencies that are out there and available now, so.
Well, thank you, Karen. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. So now we have a place you can call for that. And then also be really realistic about tornado season. If you looked what's going down in Oklahoma and that tonight, be prepared for it because, uh, uh, we've had the drills and all that, but especially your children. Uh, have a, a safe place they can go if by chance you're not home and that. And plan for it and have everything ready because when it does happen, that's not the time to plan. And the best thing is to have a pair of shoes that you can have and walk out the door with because all the disasters we're seeing down there now is people maybe at night sleeping and that and they can't get to their shoes and they bail out of the house and try to walk through, uh, a neighborhood glass nails and boards. And, uh, there's a lot of information out there about doing it, but be serious about it and look at it. Because if we have the big one, you're on your own for about the first, uh, twelve hours or so. So, thank you.
Thanks. Good, good words of wisdom. Um, a couple of things that are happening. Some of you, the weather is getting nicer and I just saw the flyer for the Wheels Fun Rentals down. That's where the farmer's market is. They're down there. They're opening up. So this weekend you will see them open. So if you want to go do mini golf, if you want to go ride bikes or things like that, you can go down there and they're going to be open. And of course, they have that lovely ice cream shop that Edwina frequents a lot. Um, and, and of course then, not too, too far off in the distant future, May twenty-first will be our farmer's market. This is the best time of the year for me because I'm down there most weekends when I'm here. Um, they have some new vendors too. They're going to have Brand Farms from Farmington, Minnesota. They're selling fresh eggs, cage-free roaming, uh, chicken eggs. Um, Chatter Farms from Welch is selling local pork, beef, and chicken products as well as some canned goods. Mugshots Coffee Company from Bloomington is offering hot drinks, coffee from Dogwood Coffee Roasters and tea from Tea Source. Then we have, uh, Platens from White Bear Lake is selling frosted coated nuts. I don't know what those are, but I got to go try them. Peanuts, almonds, pecans, walnuts, and cashews with an amazing house-made caramel, a traditional family recipe from Argentina, plus chimchurri sauce. So we'll find out what that is. Winter Goddess Farms from Minneapolis is selling wild rice breads, muffins, scones, ricotta cookies, apple butter caramels, granola nuts, and chai mixes. Their organic items are crafted without the use of chemicals, binders, extenders, fillers, additives. So some new vendors besides all the great vendors that we've already had. So I'll hope to see some of you down there at the farmer's market. So I think that's all our list of things going on in the community, which is a lot. Um, I'd ask the council to approve the agenda with one change. We will continue item number fifteen due to some, uh, just, uh, further discussion on the issue.
Some more.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Like to have discussion.
Please.
Um, I, I see some people in the audience that looked down as we said that. Do we have any idea when we'll bring this back for the councils? Do they have a, a plan?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
So those of you who are for item fifteen, um, that's going to be continued. It's thirty days. But in the meantime, if you have questions, would you please email the council and such as, so this? Well, not, not at, at this, but, but you can speak because we don't have this open tonight. But I encourage you to get to, uh, city manager and then to us too, so that we can, as we have thirty days to talk about this and figure out what's going on or what your concerns are. Okay? So we'd like to do that. Thank you. Thank you for coming. So, um, city manager, the consent calendar.
We still haven't.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, you, oh, sorry.
Got to take the vote, right?
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. The agenda's approved. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar's been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and they require no further council action. There's only four items on the consent calendar tonight and, uh, we start with item A, consideration of the approval of a request for a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Salon Concepts, Richfield LLC, sixty-five twenty-five Lindell Avenue South. Item B, consideration of the approval of a second reading of an ordinance that makes minor changes to regulations relating to accessory uses in parks. Item C is consideration of the approval of resolution, uh, approving Hennepin County Cost Participation Agreement in the amount of one point five million dollars for the acquisition of right-of-way for the Seventy-Seventh Street Underpass, uh, project. Item D is consideration of the approval of resolution supporting the submittal of grant applications to the Metropolitan Council, Metropolitan Livable Communities Tax Base Revitalization Account Grant Program and the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for contamination cleanup at the Lindell Garden Site at sixty-four hundred Lindell Avenue. And that includes the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. I am glad to see Hennepin County, um, helping us with that right-of-way. That's very generous. So that's very nice. Councilmember Garcia.
Oh, already?
Yeah, you're number eight, right?
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, already it's eight o'clock.
Okay, this is a disciplinary hearing and consideration of a resolution regarding civil enforcement for My Burger operations doing business as My Burger at sixty-five fifty-five Lindell Avenue South that recently underwent an alcohol compliance check conducted by Richfield Public Safety Staff and failed by selling alcohol to underage youth. Richfield Public Safety Staff conducted phase one of the alcohol compliance check for twenty sixteen. These checks are done to determine the availability of alcohol to underage youth and to meet state statute. There are currently thirty-six establishments that hold license to sell alcohol. Richfield Public Safety Staff conducted all alcohol compliance checks at all thirty-six establishment that sell, uh, lick alcohol in Richfield. One of the thirty, uh, what do I, okay, one of the thirty civil enforcement and penalties. Am I, did I miss a sentence? Uh, one of the thirty, um, six establishment that was checked sold, uh, alcohol to underage, to an underage person. The action was being taken today is for civil enforcement and penalties against the establishment. This is their first alcohol compliance check failure. Uh, the resolution, um, if, if they do admit the violation, the council will adopt a resolution imposing the penalties. If they deny the allegations and request a contested hearing, the city council will refer the matter to an independent hearing examiner. Anyway, so, uh, this is, um, they're, uh, the first time, um, violators because they haven't been in Richfield all that long. So the resolution states that they will be, they will suspend the license to sell alcohol for five days and pay a one thousand dollar fine. They, you will be required to have a meeting with Public Safety Director Jade Enthorn to present an individual establishment plan to ensure eliminating any further failures. And a requirement, uh, for the manager to attend an alcohol compliance sales awar, awareness presentation conducted by a private firm approved by Public Safety with all costs to be paid by the establishment. And, um, and I believe that we have, Jade, do we have the folks here?
I believe we do. Is someone here from My Burger? Would you like to speak on behalf of the violation?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Come up and please state your name.
Uh, my name is John Abdo. Uh, I'm here on behalf of My Burger as well as Doug Preston. And, uh, we do admit fault for the sale of alcohol to a minor and we take this offense, uh, very seriously. Uh, we operate our business in a way that is always meant to be a, uh, honorable part of the communities that we do business in. Uh, we are a family-friendly establishment. Uh, this is something that, uh, everybody in the company is well aware of, is a very serious policy and a violation to sell alcohol to a minor. Uh, I can tell you personally that the employee that did it, uh, feels terrible about it. She, uh, almost couldn't come to work the next day because of how bad she felt for doing it. Uh, and then we've taken steps since the violation to work with all of our staff, our managers as well, to make sure that something like this never happens again. Uh, and we're looking forward to, uh, sitting down with the chief of police to come up with a plan that he approves of, uh, to be approved by a, uh, third-party compliance service, uh, so that we're able to get all of our staff up to par and make sure that this is the, the one and only time that this happens.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have anything to add, chief?
No, I don't.
Okay. No, it's kind of disappointing because, you know, My Burger is a nice place to go and, and grab a hamburger and a beer or a glass of wine and we've been there, Mayor.
Yep.
I mean, just, you know, on official capacity of tasting the food, making sure it was good, which passed the test. So, um, anyway, um, it, oh.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. When you're done.
No, I was done. I, I just have to read the recommended act.
If I'm not mistaken, you've got a facility over in the, on the campus by TCF Stadium, correct? So you're certainly aware of, of youth and the perils of alcohol and, and being a member of the university community, I'm sure that you have frequent contact with the university police department and understand some of the problems they have over there on special occasions and stuff. So all you need to do is because you're in a suburb and everything, it's a little bit different. You don't have fifty thousand students trying to, trying to sneak a beer from you. Just, and, and I know that you've told us, but a little bit more diligence and, and, and be careful and if you're, if you, if you look any younger than I am, card them. Okay? All right?
City manager, city manager had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, being new to the community, uh, and this, uh, being a, a first violation, um, you know, our process, if you get beyond a first violation to a second violation, now you're talking some very, very, very serious consequences. And I would hate to see that, you know, I would hate to see that happen. So I do encourage you to work very carefully with the Public Safety Director to make sure you put procedures in place so that doesn't happen. I know, I'm, I'm sure your, um, your, your intentions are never to have this happen again, but I, I'm just cautioning that a second time within, uh, is it a, a one or two years would, would be very serious. So you want to make sure you don't put yourself in that position. Okay.
Councilmember Mayor, I just want to say though, we really appreciate the fact that you would come and you would stand up and, and admit the fault, but also talk about what you were doing to make it right again and how you, how seriously you take this. So we appreciate the fact that you show up and will speak. That goes a long way.
So my motion is to approve the, uh, res, resolution regarding civil enforcement for My Burger operations at sixty-five fifty-five Lindell Avenue that recently failed the alcohol compliance check conducted by Richfield Public Safety Staff by selling alcohol to an underage youth.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries. Councilmember Elliott.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
This item is a public hearing regarding the approval of new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with outside service for VPC Richfield Pizza LLC, DBA Giordano's of Richfield located at three thousand sixty-sixth Street West. I'm going to read the executive summary and then we can open the public hearing. On January twelfth, two thousand sixteen, the city received the application materials for new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with outside service for VPC Richfield Pizza LLC, DBA, DBA Giordano's of Richfield located at three thousand sixty-sixth Street West. All required information and documents have been received. A prorated fee for the duration of eight months has been received and the public safety background investigation has been completed. The results of the investigation are summarized in an attachment to this report. Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report and none of the information in the report would cause the Public Safety Director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. That being said, Your Honor, if you'd like to open the public meeting.
This is a public meeting? Would anyone like to come to speak? Does somebody hear from Giordano's? That would be wonderful if you would come speak and just tell us when you're going to open and what your plans are and the remodeling. That would be wonderful if you would come speak and just tell us when you're going to open and what your plans are and the remodeling.
Of course, this means another fact-finding trip.
Mission. I know, I know, I know. Have to do her tasting with her.
Good evening. My name is John Gleason. I'm currently the General Manager for the Giordano's in Uptown in Minneapolis on Hennepin. And I want to thank you for having me and if you have any questions.
When is it going to be open?
So right now, we're currently looking late summer, shooting for early August.
Early August, okay. And are you going to like tear up the whole inside and make it totally different?
Yes. Right now, there are plans to raise parts of the roof, to open up, put windows on the outside walls. The entire inside will be... The layout will be changed. We'll add a patio in the back corner.
Patio. Patio, outdoor patio. All right.
I have heard very good things about this pizza.
Are you going to have breakfast pizzas?
No. We make them for the staff sometimes.
I keep working on this breakfast thing. I keep working on it. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak? Anyone else come forward?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I would move to approve the issuance of new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with outside service for VPC Richfield Pizza LLC DBA Giordano's of Richfield located at 3066 Street West.
Second. Any other discussion? Glad to see a new restaurant. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Item 10, Michael Howard.
All right, I have the public hearing and second reading of the transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the Special Revenues Fund. As part of the capital improvement budget and annual city budget process, certain special revenue funds are allocated each year to fund capital projects identified through the budget process. The source of the special revenue funds are profits derived from the city's liquor store operation. These profits are transferred to the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund. Before the funds within the special revenue fund can be used for the identified capital projects, the city charter requires that a transitory ordinance be used to authorize the expenditure of the funds. In addition, the ordinance process allows for public input through a public hearing. The initial proposed funding for 2016 totals $45,000 and encompasses several park and recreation-related projects. However, at the February 23, 2016 city council meeting, the city council approved the remodeling of the Cedar Avenue Liquor Store. As part of the financing for that project, the liquor operation will reduce the 2016 special revenue fund transfer by $350,500. The reduction in the special revenue transfer will be offset by using local government aid set aside funds. So this is a public hearing.
Public hearing. This is public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak at the public hearing regarding this matter? Anyone? This is a public hearing. Would you like to come forward?
Move to close the hearing. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
So I've got the motion then to approve the second reading of the transitory ordinance providing for the expenditure of funds from the special revenue fund for certain capital improvements and approve the use of local government aid set aside funds for certain capital projects.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have the next item, item 11, which is mine. This is consideration of a first reading of an ordinance amending the city code section 710.29 related to water use restriction and schedule a second reading for May 10, 2016. It says, "near and dear to my heart with my lovely garden." This is the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources encourages cities to implement best practices in water conservation for the metro water supply. The DNR has highlighted minimizing summer peak demand on the water supply as a best practice for conservation, including prohibiting water irrigation during the day between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., which promotes effective watering habits and reduces water evaporation wasted water. Requiring a rain sensor device on automated underground sprinkler systems to... So systems do not needlessly run during periods of rain. And implementing an odd-even water irrigation schedule based on the property address, which spreads out during demand during the summer peak. Staff recommends implementing the first two water conservation best practices at a minimum, and is requesting council feedback on the third practice. If the ordinance is approved, in addition to publication in the Richfields on current, residents will be notified through water bill inserts and a social media campaign. Staff also plans to publish a webpage on city's website outlining these new measures for water conservation. So at this time, I'm going to make the motion so we can have discussion. I'm going to make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending city code subsection 710.29 related to water use restrictions and schedule a second reading for May 10, 2016.
Second.
Okay, for discussion.
Well, wait a minute. Somebody didn't say...
Yeah, I made the motion.
Oh, okay.
I made the motion. Second is correct. So I did have a conversation because I actually have this... And now I have another question because I have one of those snap-together Home Depot watering just for my garden pieces. And it's not an underground. It lays right on top of the ground. So it's not an underground watering system. So how does that play into that?
It's... Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an automated system you're talking about?
Can you speak into your microphone, please? Thank you.
Sure can.
Well, I mean, it's automated with a timer on it, yes. But it's not underground. It says underground.
Well, I think it's essentially the same, but this ordinance is written to only affect new. So although the bullet that you read, I realize it doesn't have that in there. The ordinance is for new system. So if... Or if you're modifying your system. So if you're going to do an upgrade or you're replacing something, then you would buy the part. It's like you can get a $20 part from Home Depot or...
Yeah, I noticed that.
You know, and just kind of put it into the system.
Yeah, so I've already looked at it. I probably would put a rain gauge on mine anyway because I don't need to double water. But I already water after the hours too so that I'm not evaporating. Councilmember Elliott?
I was just going to say, and it's kind of on the same lines, as silly as this may seem, I've lived in Richfield, what, 35 years? I've never watered my lawn, ever. But my wife spends an awful long time watering her plants. And the way it's written theoretically, using just a sprinkler and watering your plants violates item number one because it doesn't say by through hose, through water device. It says watering period. And I think that maybe you could use a clarification because it has to be by some sprinkler device or some outside tap or something because Jay's tough, you know? I don't need him giving me a ticket because my wife's out watering the plants with a pot, okay? I'd be embarrassed, so... But I mean, it sounds silly, but you know, that's what lawyers do is they take ordinances and statutes apart. So... And it's just a suggestion. I mean, we know what it means, but I'm just saying it could be a problem.
The ordinance itself does not... It has restrictions on sprinkling do not apply to plantings and pots and baskets in vegetable gardens. So it's excluded from that restriction.
It's excluded from sprinkling. It's not excluded from watering.
It says these... I think it is.
Don't argue with an attorney, Kristen.
All right, well, Mary will get the wording. We get the intent.
All right.
Yeah. But I did want to clarify.
You understand what I'm saying, right?
The... What we wanted to know today, so there's two ordinances attached to the... For consideration. One of them, and because we kind of had an internal discussion among staff on whether or not we wanted to move ahead with that even odd. So we thought the not watering during the middle of the day made sense. And obviously don't water when it's raining, so get the sensor. But was looking for council input on if we wanted to go as far as odd and even. It's not uncommon.
I know, but what... My problem is, is would we remember which day is odd and even? If that's for me, I won't. But also too, if you're trying to reseed grass or other kinds of things in your yard, and it doesn't always look new, but it is. And we've got a lot of work going on with, you know, the energy companies and everything. Maybe now's not the time to do this just because of those things. Until we get past that kinds of stuff, maybe we should revisit it. I certainly believe in water conservation, but I'm concerned about trying to remember that odd-even days. I mean, unless you did it by house number, if your house number is an odd number, you always do it. The last number is odd, you always do odd days. And otherwise, you know, there's no way I would remember that.
Yeah, I sort of agree, Madam Mayor. The... I think some of this is kind of changing our... Changing the culture around watering and things like that. So this seems like the first two are a very good first step. And then, you know, maybe you come back and sort of evaluate and water conservation then is a little bit more part of our thinking in general. And then, you know, can evaluate if the odd-even thing is worth adding later. And it is, I think, important to note that we're not reinventing the wheel, that there's many cities around that sort of have these practices. So I think it's a good move. But I guess I would lean towards just moving forward with the first two at this point.
Yeah. Council? Council agreement? Yeah. Councilmember?
And I do agree with the mayor. I was going to bring that up about all the construction we got and all the new sod they're putting down. Every other day, it might not make it work for those folks if we get it dry. So I would highly suggest that the first two are fine, but the even odd, we may need to revisit that when Richfield's done with construction. And then I had a question for you too. Since it's an enterprise, how much do we stand to lose because we're implementing these water restrictions, if you want to call it? And I don't know if you can answer that, but I think it's nice to know that while we're conserving, we're also taking part of our enterprise away as well.
Right. I mean, it doesn't cost any less to run the water plant or anything, even if we have less revenue. So there's an impact. I mean, you're not... Maybe you don't actually save as much money because we may have to raise the rates to keep the plant in operation. But in the end, it's the conservation of water. That's what we're talking about here.
Yeah, that's the right thing to do. And I'll buy a rain gauge even though mine's already in there. Just because it's the right thing to do.
Has the city ever thought about encouraging rain barrels? I know this is funny. I went and built a pole barn and I had to buy rain barrels because I put a pole barn up in Anandale. And I don't know if the city's ever encouraged that, but I kind of like the idea now. I got water for everything whenever I need it, so...
Yeah, we encourage it. We gave one away once at one of the remodeling fairs at the high school. But...
Some cities buy discounted ones too for residents. I mean, we've had... There's been programs of other cities buying a bunch of them so they're discounted so that they can resell them at a value. That's something maybe the farmer's market could do someday or something further in the future.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Great ideas. Okay, so at this time, I will make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending city codes subsection 710.29 relating to water use restrictions and schedule a second reading for May 10, 2016.
Second.
Need to other discussion? All those in favor?
Do we have to be specifically clear on which ordinance or do you have?
Said two, didn't it before? I thought it was...
Yeah, that was the recommended, I think. We had the alternate one was to add it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good idea. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, you have item 12.
Okay. This is a consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning designation of 7614 Pillsbury Avenue from industrial to single-family residential and a resolution amending the comprehensive plan designating... Designation from medium-high-density residential to low-density residential. And this is... We've seen this one before. It's on March 22. The council approved a change to the zoning and comprehensive plan designations for all but one parcel on the block that formerly housed Richfield Public Works Garage. The block is bounded by 76 and 77 Streets to the north and south in the railroad tracks and Pillsbury Avenue on the west and east. The entire block was formerly zoned industrial in keeping with Public Works facility, but the area has been guided for multifamily housing for a number of years. All properties except for 7614 Pillsbury Avenue have been zoned, rezoned as a planned unit development district in order to allow for the construction of an 88-unit senior housing development. The single-family home at 7614 Pillsbury Avenue is not part of this project and will remain. Staff is proposing to rezone and re-guide this property as single-family residential and low-density residential respectively. On its own, this property cannot be used for either an industrial or multifamily use. The proposed designation will make the property conforming and will therefore offer the property owner the most flexible flexibility in terms of maintenance and improvement to the property. And Mr. Stark is here. I don't know if he wants to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Garcia. You know, I don't have much to add. This is really an effort to protect the property owner at 7614. Without this kind of action, this property would be deemed legally non-conforming with zoning. And that could affect the ability to get a mortgage or other kinds of financing. I think that we have come to the conclusion that, you know, that homeowner isn't going anywhere. And, you know, maybe someday that will change. And if and when it does, we will readdress this with you. But while she's there, this is, we think, the appropriate thing to do.
This has been kind of a challenging piece of land. And I know that you've entertained a lot of proposals that have come our way, but you've done a good job on this and we appreciate that. So what I would like to do is move the approved second reading of the ordinance amending Appendix 1 of the city code to change the zoning of 7614 Pillsbury Avenue from industrial to single... I... To single-family residential R. And to approve the resolution amending the comprehensive plan to change the designation of 7614 Pillsbury Avenue from medium-high-density residential to low-density residential.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a consideration of a second reading of an ordinance amending subsection 210.01 of the city code related to city council salaries. Chapter 11, section 210 of the city code establishes the salaries of the city council. Subsection 210.01 sub 5 provides the salaries of the city... The council members shall be reviewed by the city council by May 1 in each year in which the election is being held pursuant in section 200 of the code. An ordinance amending the salaries established by this section must be taken effect until after the next exceeding municipal election. I'm glad somebody tracks all those codes and knows how that goes. The next city council salary adjustment would take effect January 1, 2017 if the city council approves the ordinance. First reading of the proposed ordinance was approved in April 12, 2016. So at this time, I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance amending subsection 210.01 of the city code related to the city council salaries. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
I oppose?
No.
My opposition. Motion carries. Councilmember FitzHenry, you have item 14.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is a resolution awarding the sale of $3 million, $85,000 general obligation stormwater revenue bond series 2016 or 2016A. The Stormwater Utility Fund of the city is responsible for the treatment and disposal of stormwater within the city. As such, the operation serves two purposes. To provide protection of property from damage due to flooding in the city and to provide environmentally responsible treatment of stormwater. As part of the city's planning process for the upcoming 66th Street reconstruction project by Hennepin County, a stormwater project was identified by both the city councils and the staff. That project was the West Richfield Stormwater Project. The project was developed to increase flood protection on the west side of the city. The current stormwater pipe from 66th Street is undersized, flat, and frequently backs up, causing localized flooding in the area. The new stormwater infrastructure will provide the relief needed to reduce the localized flooding issues in the west side of the city. In addition, the 66th Street being reconstructed, it would be efficient to initiate a complete the project in conjunction with the street construction. The project would continue the city's efforts to fulfill the stormwater utility's two purposes. Funding for the project would come from the issuance of 3... Funding for the project would come from the issuance of $3 million, $85,000 of General Obligation Stormwater Revenue Bonds Series 2016A. The debt on the $3 million, $85,000 Series 2016A bonds will be paid by revenues generated by the stormwater utility. It is expected the fund will continue to maintain a positive cash flow in the near future with the new bond issued debt service requirements and other additional cash requirements. However, cash balances will need to be monitored along with stormwater rates. The term of the bonds will be 20 years. I don't know if I want to read this whole thing or keep going, but I'll let Chris Reed just chime in here since you're better at it and probably can do better explaining it than me reading it to everybody.
Well, actually, there's somebody here that'd be better than me, and that would be Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers and Associates.
We'll let her come in there.
I have handed out results of the sale today, and the sale was very, very positive. As Rebecca will say, the original par value that we offered was $3 million, $85,000. While we received an offering premium as part of the bid for the bonds, and we applied that premium to the par value of the bonds. So now the new par value of the bonds is 2.97 million, which is a savings to the city. So I'll let Rebecca carry on, steal some of her thunder.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers and Associates. And as said, we took bids at our office today for the General Obligation Stormwater Bonds for the project along 66th Street. Before we did go to the bidding process though, as we've done in the past, we had the bonds rated by Standard and Coors, and I'm happy to say they affirmed the AA+ rating. So again, as always, that's a testament to the continued good work and management of Chris, the other finance staff and departments, along with the council's directors. So congratulations to that. I do want to just highlight a few of the comments that were made in the rating report. Reasons for affirming the AA+ rating include the strong economy with access to the broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area of the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. S&amp;P also talks about their view of the city's management as very strong, with strong financial policies and practices under the FMA or Financial Methodology Assessment that S&amp;P uses to kind of track and compare your management methodology. And it indicates that the financial practices are strong, well-embedded, and likely sustainable. They also talk about Richfield's comprehensive debt management policy that includes specific limitations and guidelines that go well beyond the state statutes. They highlight Richfield's budgetary performance as being very strong in the opinion of Standard and Coors, along with budgetary flexibility being very strong. They also talk about the liquidity as being very strong and the overall net debt as being low at 2.8% of market value, which in the view of Standard and Coors is a very positive credit factor. In summary, they write, "The stable outlook reflects the standard cores anticipation that Richfield will maintain very strong budgetary flexibility despite potential pressures from the ice arena and swimming pool funds." However, they anticipate the city will maintain very strong liquidity and management conditions and will continue to benefit from its access to the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area. They don't expect a change in the rating during the two-year outlook or the horizon. One question that we do get quite frequently from councils is, you know, what can we do? Or are there things to take us to the next level? And the comment from S&amp;P in regards to that is, they would consider a higher rating if the city's per capita market value improved significantly. So the good news is, you're doing everything that you can do, that you have control of. The bad news is, the factor that may help get you to that next level is something that I think with time will come, but it is not something we have direct control of to make a change in our current practices to improve. But again, overall, very, very good rating, congratulations, and definitely a testament to the work from everybody on staff. So jumping forward to what actually happened today, we did receive four bids. The low bid was Stiefel Nicholas out of Birmingham, Alabama. In the packet that Chris handed out, there is a summary of all the bids that were received and the details. The low bid was a true interest cost of 2.175%. Just for comparison purposes, when we called for the sale roughly a month ago, we had estimated interest cost of 2.673, so almost 50 basis points lower than what we had anticipated for the bid. As Chris mentioned, we did receive a premium bid of 90, or just over $96,000. And so with that, in very simple terms, the underwriters provide more money than what we had asked for on the bonds. So with that, ultimately, that means that we were able to reduce the principal amount to the $2,970,000, ultimately saving in overall interest cost over the time of the bonds because of the lower principal amount. With that, you still will receive the $3 million that we had anticipated and that is needed for the project to move forward. So the project costs do not change at that. We're looking at closing and having funds available on May 19th, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, there is a resolution for you to adopt if you choose to do so, and we are recommending to approve the low bid to Stiefel Nicholas at 2.175.
Any other questions, council? No, this is always good news, it's always good news to hear. Councilmember, you want to make a review?
Okay, yeah, so I need a point order so we get it right here. Do we have two resolutions before us now that we have the bids, or?
Just had the recommended action.
I think there's typically just one resolution.
There would be one resolution, the one that was distributed probably in your council packets has, well, the $3 million number in it and also some blanks, part of that is just a timing issue to get it in the packets. So the form of the resolution will not change, however, if you choose to award the bid to Stiefel Nicholas, we will then work with Kennedy and Graven, your bond counsel, to update the resolution with the information that I just provided.
Okay, so you're recommending then that the resolution be that we accept the bid from this bidder then?
That is correct.
Okay, I don't want to get it wrong.
So it would be accepting...
It's on the council thing, you can just read it right off the council recommendation, yeah, just that'll work.
This right here, but is the amount changed then?
The amount will change to the $2,970,000.
Got it, so I'm just gonna amend the amount on the motion here.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Okay, so I then make a motion that we approve the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Stormwater Revenue Bonds Series 2016A in the original aggregate principal amount of $2,970,000. Let's see if I got that right, okay. Fixing in their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Good work.
Yeah, it is, and we have continued item 15. So Michael, you have, councilmember, you have item 16?
Yes, I have consideration of the alignment of Richfield Parkway south of 66th Street and north of Diagonal Boulevard. In 2004, the city contracted with JLG Architects to develop master plan for the Cedar Avenue corridor. The plan called for the construction of the future Richfield Parkway from 63rd Street to 76th Street. The alignment north of 66th was proposed to follow 17th Avenue, which was completed in 2014. The alignment south of 66th Street was proposed to follow Cedar Avenue. In mid-2015, the Anderson Company, the Anderson Companies presented a plan for an approximately 300-unit multifamily housing development in the Cedar Corridor just south of 66th Street. As part of this proposal, a Richfield Parkway would be constructed south of 66th Street to 68th Street. Given the time that had elapsed since the Cedar Corridor master plan was adopted, the proposed 77th Street underpass connection and the recent development proposals for the area, staff re-engaged with JLG to update the plan south of 66th Street to 77th. During the updated process, the future alignment of Richfield Parkway was reevaluated with two options being proposed, alignment following Cedar or alignments following 18th. Both alignment options were presented to the city council, HRA, and Planning Commission at work sessions in January and April. The alignment options were also presented to the city's Transportation Commission in April, at which time the commission unanimously voted to approve the 18th Avenue alignment between 66th Street and Diagonal Boulevard. Additionally, a public open house was held in March and a survey posted on the city's website to garner feedback from residents regarding the proposed alignment options. Anderson Companies would like to break ground on portions of their proposed development yet this year. As such, need definitive direction as to the alignment of Richfield Parkway through their project. Based on feedback gathered and from policymakers at the April work session, staff is recommending the council approve the 18th Avenue alignment option for Richfield Parkway between 66th Street and Diagonal Boulevard. So the motion is to approve the 18th Avenue alignment of Richfield Parkway south of 66th Street and north of Diagonal Boulevard.
Second.
So do we have any pictures or anything that we wanted to show, John, is it up? Okay, I guess.
Maybe the AV people can put it on the screens. There we go.
There we go, there we go, okay. So the people just have an idea what we're looking at as far as for the alignment. So 18th Street was the concession of, I think, not just the city council, but of the planning and HRA. So all those in favor signify, excuse me, comment?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, and there's an open house mention that I think had a lot of people attend, which I think is great, that there's a lot of discussion on that. I think that this is something that, we had a good work session too on this to discuss kind of the, what this looks like and kind of what the future discussion looks like. I would just make a point that there's a long way to go in terms of what this corridor looks like for, you know, a generation to come. And it's really important that the public who lives there now and in our whole city has a voice in what that looks like. And so we've got a lot of work to do and we need a lot of public input. I think this is a good first step, but just want to make sure the public knows to continue to engage on this. We will engage with you, I think it's important for a public process to continue on this.
Steph?
And along those lines, I will just note that there is a page on the city's website that's devoted to the Cedar Corridor master plan, and all of the upcoming meetings will be listed on that webpage as well as notices will be mailed out to residents in the area when we have future public meetings where we're requesting feedback and input.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, we move forward. We have city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the only report I have is more of an event that I think is kind of cool. Tomorrow, I think it's from about 4:00 to 7:00 at the Lyndale, at our Lyndale Liquor Store, we're having a wine tasting, but it's this special Spanish wine that is, the owners of, the owners of the Richfield Bloomington Honda, they have a vineyard in Spain, I believe, and they bottle wine. And Vinicopia, who's another Richfield business, is the exclusive distributor for that wine. And our liquor stores are the first outlets in the state of Minnesota for that wine. And there's gonna be a special wine tasting with all the goodies over at the...
Which Lyndale store is it, the north or the south?
Oh, the north, a remodeled one that has the nice area in the back for those kind of events, so.
I've tried that wine, it's good.
Yeah, so anyway, this, that should be fun.
That is, that is, that's very cool, that's very cool. Okay, so I just have to get it in here so I come. I got it in my calendar, I gotta add that.
Fact finding again.
Yeah, I know, fact finding.
You know, in the treatment world, that's protecting your source.
That's all right.
Be careful.
Yeah, I might need to designate a driver, Pat.
I can do that.
I know. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Discussion, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have a closed executive session. This is a special city council closed executive session in the Babcock Room regarding the city manager's annual performance review. We will reconvene the regular city council meeting in these council chambers after that review, and then we'll have a summary of the manager's annual performance at that time. So at this time, we will just retire, everybody can have a five-minute break, and we'll, do we have the executive conference room? Okay, we'll be there. Everyone there.
What they'll do is, what they'll do is, is just open the, but they probably will. But I think they, they like to have it. It does resume. Yeah. You're stuck here. Good to see ya. Yeah.
How much do you live?
Yeah, if I was. At this point. But.
Thirty years. I mean, we're here for like three years.
Yeah, thirty. I was here fifteen.
Was that true?
That wasn't the school.
Like where does he live?
That's in kind of really popular. That's one of my biggest. That's, you kind of, really confident. That's one of the big things.
I mean, I'm able to see. I left. All right. Oh, we'll, we see. Well, we'll have.
Every year, they.
Yeah.
Yeah, just see him.
Yeah, right.
Oh, my God. He loves gift. I was wondering if you were watching, because he is just like.
He is, yeah.
Well, he do this. And he's like this.
Who?
Um, he's pretty cool. Yeah, he's totally, loves it. Good for them. Great, right? Thanks. But, you know. Oh. Can I just think of myself?
Who's? Like, thinking.
Yeah, just like, so we're here, always the same thing.
Oh, right.
And.
I'm prepared. I probably, within a month, I'd be.
I like to work too.
I like to.
I don't know.
I've had, I've had it shot since fifteen years.
Yeah, that's fourteen, right? I wouldn't say it here in the morning now.
Yeah, I'm sure I won't stop.
So after days of deliberation. Days and hours of deliberation.
Okay, we're done now.
So I am reconvening this city council meeting in the city council chambers. And I'm, I'm going to be providing the review of the city manager's annual report. First of all, I'd like to talk about some of the discussion items we had in council chambers regarding the performance of, of the city manager. I think there were several, several council members who talked about the high level of professionalism that the city manager has expressed throughout the year, but also beyond and before that. There are many comments that he is extremely invested in the city. Not only is he invested in the city, but he makes sure that other staff members are also invested in the city. And this trickles down throughout the entire city. Council members spoke very highly of the fact that he is very respectful to all of us, that he, we have access to him when we need him. He's a good listener and the things he does. We also noted with his other direct reports that he empowers his directors to lead and to work with them, to advance their skills. We're also very pleased with some of the succession planning that we're seeing going on with some really great qualified candidates in our city that are being promoted. I think one of the shining moments of this past year is the underpass project. You moved that forward with a lot of zeal, a lot of excitement with great success. And I think, you know, no, no small part to all the efforts that we all put in and we hired a lobbyist, all the things that we did. The institutional knowledge you bring here to the cities is invaluable. And your creativeness with your city and problem solving has gained us projects other cities wouldn't have. So we, we appreciate the innovation, the dollars you've saved us over here. And in summary, we feel that you are very responsive to the community, the staff and the council. And your dedication is apparent in your words and your actions. We're very pleased you're staying on for a while longer. There are many variables in your position and the job that you execute, you execute them very well. There's no doubt that in the future, we look at these accomplishments, but you will make the city an even better place. To that, we have reeled, we have reviewed the compensation package that is part of your contract for the next following year. One of the things we have decided on is to reduce your obligation for the city to provide the life insurance. On the cost savings of about twenty seven hundred, we will add that to your salary. We've also decided to allow you to sell back an additional one week, forty hours of vacation during the course of the year. And then we have given you an annual increase of two point eight percent on your salary, which we think is very much deserved. We want, we know that you are a senior in your field, meaning lots of wisdom. We have looked at the other candidates of managers throughout the metropolitan area who are also of equal capacity. And we want to make sure that you are fairly compensated along with that group. And that is the guidance that we, I have been get, I've gotten from the council. At this time, I would make a motion to accept the compensation package for the city manager as stated.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.